I call this city council meeting to order at seven P M September fifth, twenty twenty-three. I will stand up and do the vice loop. Ready to begin.
I am a legal agent student of the United States of America and to the three public for which it stands. One nation under God in this soul with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so I prepared something to start off before we do the roll call. To the citizens of Boardman, August twenty-fifth, the city was notified of the charges that were brought against Councilman Isaac Williams. Councilman Isaac Williams is allowed due process according to the Constitution of the United States. The council just can't remove council members. Today, September fifth, Councilman Williams gave a written resignation letter effective immediately, which I, as mayor, accepted. We'll do the roll call, please.
Here, Heather, here, Christina, here, Richard.
Here.
Here, here.
Paul.
Here. Google events, August first, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting.
I'd like to move to approve the regular meeting minutes from August first.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the meeting minutes? Having hearing done, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We'll go on to the public comment. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. I recognize those people wishing to speak. Any questions should be addressed through me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium as the hearing is being recorded. Please keep your comments concise and to the point. The mayor may limit comments to three minutes per person for a total of thirty minutes. And we already talked about, so Stephen Monkers filled one out. You have the podium, sir.
Yes, Stephen Monkers. I live in Eriegan, one sixty-five, local court. And I'm representing Eriegan as a citizen, and I'm also a board member of the Morro County Health District. And I have a handout, if you would like to have it, on some of the things that have happened with the health district this year.
Okay.
But as a citizen of Eriegan, we hear rumors. And we'd like to be sure that these are facts, not rumors, that the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, system is, uh, the public, uh, forums, and a lot of rumors are spread through these, uh, systems, and that's just not quite right. We need to work together on a lot of things. Now, we have a meeting, uh, the twenty-fifth for the health district, and I'd like to have people from Boardman attend these to see what's going on, but exchange information. As Paul knows, we've worked together many a time, and there's only one way to really resolve conflict, and that's to talk. We've done that many a time on a peaceful field. So, you know, if you don't talk, things don't get settled. You get a lot of rumors. That's just not the way to handle things. So anyway, uh, as a citizen of Eriegan, I hear rumors, well, I'm not a fan of that. And the health district, we need to talk. I really encourage you to attend the meetings to see what's going on. And we would like to know what's going on in Boardman, too. And with this handout, it'll spell out some of the things that we're trying to do. So I'd like to hand it to everybody, if that's alright.
Sure.
Okay? And appreciate the time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wish to do a public comment? Melissa, would you like to do a public comment? Because we have a forum if you'd like to speak in public. Alright, so we'll go to our next, uh, item. Uh, we're gonna insert something. Chief Stoco has some new officers that he would like to introduce to us.
Yes, so, uh, before, why don't you guys come up here? Uh, we have our new, uh, hires. Um, and in a minute, I'll, I'll introduce, but while I have each one of them, just kind of give you a little bit idea who they are, uh, where they're from, and, and, uh, where they are in their position with the police department. So let's start off with Jason Navarro. Jason was hired, uh, a long time ago. He's in the academy currently, graduates the fifteenth of this month, so next week.
Next Friday.
Yeah, so, uh, go ahead.
Sure, well, my name is Jason Navarro. I grew, was born and raised basically here. Um, lived here my whole life, beside me for like a year, or two years, in the tri-cities. Um, been living here, my family of, I think, if I remember, seven. So I got three brothers, three sisters, including myself, including our, our mother. Um, joined the army during COVID, uh, went guard, did that. Soon as I came back, started flying crazy to become police officer, because what I knew I wanted to do has always been the plan. Um, so I came back, did that, got my break with Boardman. Um, joined here, loved it ever since. Still love it. Academy currently, like Chief said. Uh, graduation next Friday. Ready to come here, get to work, and start serving my community the way, best way I could and can, you know? Um, and just do the best I can as an officer and a person, and do what I can here.
Well, thank you, Officer Navarro. Welcome.
So next up, we have.
Even though he's lived here his whole life.
We're, we're proud that we're hiring, uh, folks that have, uh, lived, raised, and graduated from Boardman, and Jason's one of those.
Well, they grow up, and it's like, holy spokes. Makes us feel really young.
Uh, next, we have Thomas White. Thomas is a certified officer, uh, has six years, seven years' experience, five years' experience. Uh, uh, we just brought, uh, brought him on at the, oh, Monday, or Friday, Friday. Uh, he is going to, uh, be able to transition to patrol very quick. Um, and why don't you go ahead and tell yourself about, a little bit about yourself.
Well, you just stole it. Um, I haven't been in the area for too long. We moved back here five, five years ago. Um, I've got three kids that are in school here. They've been in school pretty much, my youngest, his entire school age. Um, we've kind of jumped around, moved to different places. They've stayed here. Um, I started working with Morro County. And then I went to Yuma-Tilla, and even working in Yuma-Tilla, I could stay here in Boardman. It's always been my goal to keep them in Boardman. They're established here. They've grown up. They've got their friends, and it's, it's a good place to raise kids. Um, I don't know. I'm here.
So the big thing about Thomas is having worked for Morro County, lives here in Boardman, so he's familiar with the area. Um, uses our radio system, same software, so it's, it's a rather short transition period. We're, we're saying two weeks, but if, if he's here a week before he's out on his own, I would be surprised.
Where's your, where do, uh, where does his experience from?
From Morro County.
Oh.
Yuma-Tilla P D, and now.
Okay, Morro County.
Yep.
So we do a pretty good job on, uh, recruiting Morro County.
We do, we do.
Anyway.
We must pay pretty well.
And.
Oh, it's about the chief then?
Anyway, so let's change the topic. Uh, our last candidate, uh, that we, uh, recently hired is Zach, Zachary Stusman. He's from Hebner. Uh, he joined our force about a month ago.
August twenty-first.
Yep, so, um, he's scheduled, I think, in December to go to the academy. We're trying to bump that up to November. Um, so that when getting, uh, uh, through the academy process and then getting back on. Uh, Zach, why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Zachary Stusman, um, born and raised on Silverton, Oregon, Northern Valley. Um, recently just moved to Hebner about two years ago. Uh, but I always had interest in law enforcement. Um, I just love being a part of the community, um, be able to have the interaction with people. But, um, excited to, uh, start and join the community and, uh, be a part and start serving and getting to build a relationship and, um, just getting to know everybody.
You're welcome. Thank you. So we're very excited to have these gentlemen on board. Um, they're gonna be very involved in the community at, at normal expectations. They all said that they're good with that, so. Um, I told them today that, uh, they didn't get a lot of notice that they had to speak, but uh, they'll, they'll find out that they need to do a lot of public speaking when you work with them, so. We're excited.
Absolutely.
Welcome.
Thank you, guys. Uh, you're welcome to go home.
No, you're welcome to stay. You're welcome to stay as well. Chief, did you, uh, say you did hire an S R O?
Uh, so we, we did not hire an S R O. We, we did an assessment center and promoted them, but then it's not even promotion, it's assignment. So Corey Rosen has been assigned as the S R O, um, which means we pulled him out of the, uh, vent team. Uh, but we've had to, because we're a bit short-handed, we've had to pull him out of the vent team for, uh, patrol coverage, so.
Oh, okay.
And, and I could probably get into that further in my report.
Okay.
So we kind of stay on certain.
Alrighty, we'll go down to our action item ordinances, two dash two zero two three, the North Urban Renewal Plan, second reading and a decision.
I move to approve the second reading by title only, ordinance number two dash two thousand twenty-three, and ordinance making certain determinations and findings relating to and improving the North Urban Renewal Plan and directing that notice to be published.
So a motion and a second, and is anybody would like to discuss this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We need to do the ordinance number two dash two zero two three. We need to adopt it.
We need to read it first. We need to.
Did we?
She read it.
Oh.
Okay, that's fine.
No, her motion was to do the second reading, to do.
Then we didn't do the, we didn't do the second reading by title only. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, City of Boardman ordinance number two dash two zero two three. An ordinance making certain determinations and findings relating to and improving the North Urban Renewal Plan and directing that notice of approval to be published.
Okay.
I move to approve ordinance number two dash two thousand twenty-three, adopting a North Urban Renewal Plan and direct the city recorder to publish a notice of adoption within four days of this adoption. This ordinance shall be effective thirty days after approval.
No, I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So we'll go to resolutions fifteen dash twenty twenty-three, the fee schedule.
So Carla and I have met and talked about this. I know that was the request for the last time. Um, there really is a way for you all to discuss, see if there's any discrepancies. Uh, we did have, Carla had a conversation with Marta, was able to find that generally we bring in about twenty-five thousand. The cost is about eight thousand. Um, and it's not always just about apples and oranges. Sometimes it goes up and down based on like the postings or or what is being asked, what permits are being requested. Um, within that, it is interesting to look at. I have, when I was on the council, I was always about this concept of we don't, I just don't want to charge the city anything. If there's a way that we don't have to, then let's not do it. Um, there's also this train of thought that people will invest and take it more seriously as something is like connected to that, at like a higher dollar amount. Um, and it was interesting. Carla, what was the analogy you gave?
So I worked for an organization and many, many years ago, um, it was a community development. We had a community education program, and we offered CPR classes for three dollars, and twenty people would sign up to come to the CPR for any class, and nobody would show. And we actually increased the fee, and I don't remember what we increased it to, whether it was ten or twenty-five, but please understand this was nineteen ninety-something, so, you know, dollars were a lot different. But we raised the fee. We still had twenty people sign up, and guess what? Eighteen or twenty of them would show up. Because they assumed that, gosh, if they charged ten dollars or whatever it was, there's bound, but when we only charged three dollars, it was easy for them to sign up and not show up. So it, it, it's interesting, and, and I guess to bring that forward to this, the conversation with most of the developers that we deal with, please understand, they are, the builder building the home, not mom and dad, but the builder building the home, or the developer building the Dollar General, or they are, they are at a, at a court facility. And they're accustomed in most of the jurisdictions that they work in to pay fees that are probably upwards of ten times what we charge. So when we charge twenty-five or forty or fifty dollars for a sign, they're like, that's all. I mean, they're ready to write the five hundred dollar or the five thousand dollar check for just the permit, let alone the sign and everything, everything else that goes with it. So you know, just, but some of my experience I've had. Yeah.
I move to adopt resolution number fifteen dash two thousand twenty-three, a resolution adopting a boost table to govern fees for city services and repealing resolution number thirteen dash two thousand twenty-two.
I got a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, you got a second, so now's the time we can have a discussion. Is there any discussion or concerns that people have about this document?
I ended up asking, you know, I need my argument for, it wasn't so much about raising the fees, but I did take, uh, Chief Stoco, I believe, was still that interim city manager. He made a comment about we didn't have to raise it, he felt like we could absorb the cost, so I'm just gonna throw that out there. If we can, and, and I understand Carla's point of view, too, is like, there's gotta be something attached to it, because, uh, then people don't know the worth of it. So I get that as well. Um, the only thing I'm gonna bring up again is just when we talked about, the, the topic that I talked about most was the notices and how much we spend on that. On notices, public, the amount of money that we spend on public notices, if there's a way that we can lower that cost. But I believe that's probably more about just finding a way that we can cut the cost.
The requirement.
No, I, I understand that, but where we send our money to? That's all I'm saying. That's something I think that we can actually just go, hey, let's find a cheaper way of doing this, and then just do it, even though it's already that amount's budgeted or, or whatever. That's the only thing I'm gonna bring up.
So is this statute that it has to be printed in the local newspaper?
Right, it's, it's your future. Yeah.
But. Yes, and my, and my argument with that is, is that do they even print a newspaper anymore? And if they do, does anybody even read it? And if they're not reading it, what are they reading? I understand why we have to put notices out there. But at the same time, are we just throwing our dollars at somebody for the sake, because we have it in our head that this is the only way that we can do it? That's, in my opinion, that's not true.
Um, that's what.
I, I, I get that. What I'm saying is, is there, is there another, is there another avenue that we can go and save money? Because like I said, we are not in the, the day and age where everybody picks up a newspaper anymore.
When we can, we do. So there's different requirements for all the different types of postings, like the ones I'm familiar with are the ones for the budget, um, and then everything else I do. They do allow for one of the publishers to be on our website.
Uh huh.
And I do take that option. So we do, if we can, if there's an alternative and free or eligible cost, we do take it. But it's still a requirement for even the budget to be printed in the newspaper, and we have to have affidavits of publication sent to us to prove that, yes, we did have it posted in the newspaper, and we have to hold on to those for forever.
So, so I, I get all that. What I'm saying is, is there another way that we, another newspaper that we could look at that is cheaper? The poor morrow puts all their public notices in Hebner Gazette. Why aren't we considering doing that? It's a weekly newspaper.
It has to do with timing. Some of them have to be published, like my budget one, you know, five to ten, um, days before the meeting. Um, so if they're not publishing in that short timeframe, it doesn't meet the requirement.
So then.
Um, the public notices for planning, some of them are twenty-one days before the meeting, you know, you have so many days to respond before the next set. So it, it falls in the timing and.
So how does, how do we, so if the E O is no longer printing a regular newspaper anymore, and they're only doing online, how do we find the public notices? Do we have to go to a link?
They do print, the Hurst and Harold and the Eastern Orange.
Still have a print version in Boardman, in Boardman?
Yes, we picked one up at the station the other day.
Okay.
I don't have River Lodge, so.
I don't know.
They, they, they publish Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday.
Okay.
And some of, some of the notices that go out, we only have forty-eight hours in order to publish them, so that's based on that time.
And then what will be the recourse when they stop doing that, which will probably be soon?
I guess the legislature should take that out, right?
I, 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 I'm just saying, I honestly think that there's ways to lower that cost. And if we're talking about trying to spend our money wisely for the citizens of Boardman, that's what we do. We look at trying to lower costs, not raise costs.
And we do, like I said, uh, one of the options, like the budget is, I can, uh, post it on our website, and I do, I take that option as that's second possibility. Uh, so we do look at that, so we do try to save money where we can. Good.
That's, that's my only argument.
I did want to point out on the third page, there's a small grammatical error at the very top.
Third page of the schedule?
Yes.
It says things.
Things instead of signs. Um, and then, um, my only question is on some of these that have, um, new fee listed. Um, and I'm not talking about necessarily developers, but things like the fence, um, if that's gonna be communicated or advertised to the public, um, just if it's not something that typically was something that was required, um, to pay a fee for, just that the public is aware that there is now a fee for that, um, so that they're not later cited.
So there have been, there's been a fee for getting a permit for fans for, and I don't know how long, but certainly.
It just wasn't on the.
Been here. Yeah, there, yeah.
It just wasn't on our list before?
Right, I mean, that's, I think that's one of the things where there were a lot of inconsistencies. So where fees were being, were being charged, but it wasn't clearly delineated on the fee schedule. So some of this was about getting it on the fee schedule so that we had a place where you could go back and look at it and say, yes, these are. So they were representing the workhorse practice, and maybe not necessarily the fee schedule, um, on the adopted fee schedule. Signs, fences, there were a number of those types of things.
Okay.
Yeah, I just saw with that, um, that there was some changes to that, and I didn't know if we needed to make it more known.
You get perfect, you do that.
She's saying there already is. There already is.
No, there's a new fee. It was used to be free. Right?
No.
Uh, and I guess I never got a, a permit, twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago.
Well, I can't speak about that length of time, but I know in, in, in recent history, there has been a fee.
Oh.
He needs to take it down. He needs to take it down, right?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. A post mortem officer.
You don't take it down, you won't have to be a fine.
You have to get a permit and take your fence down?
No, you put one up without a permit. Now you're in trouble.
Oh, yeah. Alright, so any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? For resolution eighteen dash twenty twenty-three, press three and land Weston. That would be you there, Mr. City Manager, right?
So, Chief, come on in.
Yes, so be, before you is a, uh, a long-term enterprise zone agreement with Enterprise Zone Three, Columbia River Enterprise Zone Three, uh, with Land Weston. Uh, we would ask that, uh, through the, uh, resolution, as it has been voted by your crez representatives. Um, this has to be formalized in the, uh, city and county level for those, so.
This was super exciting because the bonding issue, uh, is super cool. So the bonding issue is they pay on all bonding once the credit agreement was signed by them. And that was yeah, just because they didn't have to do that. Unless we didn't agree to it, so.
That's probably true.
I move to adopt resolution number eighteen twenty twenty-three, a resolution adopting an agreement between the sponsors of Columbia River Enterprise. So three and Land Weston Incorporated.
I second that. Here we go, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I just say the only discussion I have is we, the cres board hasn't come, uh, no, that's different, never mind. Um, that was on something different. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, going to other business, the L O C voting delegate appointment.
Okay, so in the October meeting that we have, it is the council needs to vote for one voting member for the attendees. I think Brendan, myself, and Karen are going. Brendan, myself are going.
Are you the only two that are going?
I believe so.
So I guess if we need a voting member, you two need to decide who wants to be the one, and then I'll appoint it.
Actually, the city council or?
So who wants to be the talker? I mean, that's, I mean, there's only two people.
Well, we'll talk about it, we'll come back.
So you just have to let the league know, it's not a big deal, it's not, I mean.
So basically, whoever agrees to do it, the mayor's gonna agree to.
Alright.
Does that seem fair?
Or, or the American society.
Sounds like Brandon doesn't want to do it, so would you like to do it?
Sign me up.
Hey, you are hereby appointed.
You need to be in motion.
Yes.
I move to appoint Brendan Prophet to serve as the city's voting delegate during the League of Orange City's annual business meeting on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
And I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. It was, yeah. Okay. Okay, so we have a vacancy on, on, on our council. And, uh, we're just going, is there a deadline? How do, how do you want to, how are you planning on doing that?
We need to accept news.
We already did.
He did.
Okay.
Yes, we said it at the beginning.
So in the past, it was my understanding that you would, we would do a public notice, accept letters, and then have a interview or discussion during the next, so we just need to have, and set a deadline before. So the next city council meeting is on the twenty-nine?
No, October sixth, uh, October third. Right?
Sure.
October third.
That is today.
Okay, so October third, and then we just. Okay, so October third, and then we just need, how much time do you want to be able to look at them prior?
I would. I'm thinking deadline be on the October, September, or let's say the fifth, twenty sixth. Would that be enough, or do we want a little later?
I think it could come in the packet, couldn't it?
There could be several. I mean, sometimes it's just nice to have a good.
I mean, if we put the deadline on the twenty sixth, that gives them time to put it in the packet, to be able to review over. Would that be enough time?
Cause I'll get it on the twenty ninth.
Yeah, we did the pack on the twenty ninth, so.
Well, that's, so you give the twenty sixth would be a good deadline on Tuesday.
Deadline September twenty sixth, we'll announce that.
One, two, that's three full weeks. Correct, so we'll move on to uh. Police report. Chief Stokoe.
Uh, in your packet. You should have a report uh. For the month of August, um. In that report, you see that there's two months there that uh, I don't have numbers and that was during Chief Dieter's term. He was doing the. Uh, data entry on a different form that I'm, that I'm using, so I will try to update that at some point, but uh. Uh, month of August is, is, it's staying steady, we're, we're busy. Uh, I will tell you that uh, we've seen a significant increase in our DUI, uh, which is driving under the influence. That doesn't just necessarily mean alcohol, it also includes narcotics. We've seen a very significant increase, or we're easily arrested three or four people on a weekend. And, and we can't keep up, I mean, we could, we could arrest more than that, so uh. Huge numbers, uh, it doesn't help that um. Narcotics were decriminalized, uh. Makes it uh. Easier for people to think that they can do them, but they, they're still can. Fall into the DUI um statute, so uh, we are doing emphasis, we will be doing emphasis patrols. Uh, we are gonna ramp up our DUI enforcement, we're gonna bring out, and I'm gonna pay people overtime to go out and look for DUIs. Um, and we've also invited the Oregon State Police to come over and participate. Um, they're here on a regular basis and they're like. This is easy.
It's an unfortunate thing because we have a lot of people who are. What do I say? Crashing their car and fleeing.
Well, that, that was my other uh, uh, caveat is that is with those increased DUIs, we're also having an increase in hit run accident. Where they, they may not have a license, they don't have insurance or they're under the influence and they don't stick around, so. Um, if we don't find them, whose ever car gets hit, it's on their, their, them and their insurance, which is really tough. Um, so uh, we're seeing an increase in, in our hit runs as well. So we're gonna, we're gonna put some. Emphasis on those patrols, just know when we do that, you're gonna get complaints that gee, everything that moves in Boardman gets stopped. Well. We gotta stop vehicles to find out who's drinking and who's driving, so um.
It also allows us to know who's in our community and who's shouldn't be in our community. Gives us an idea of. There are a lot of people that come through our community that are. Not looking to do good things. And if that finds those people. I'm, you know, it does, but I also have complete confidence in the police department that. If I cross the line. And I'm not intoxicated, probably not gonna get a ticket. I may be embarrassed a little bit. Just like I did when I did a California stop with my daughter on the back of my motorcycle and I got on the day of school being. And everybody passed on Main Street. But the officer completely made it, and you know he did California stop, instead of put a left foot down. He didn't come to a complete stop, so. I just hope our community is uh, for the ones who are. Making good choices and if they feel they get stopped, I hope they have a little bit of uh. Grace and understand what we're trying to do as a community and as a city.
So uh, aside from that, uh, as I said earlier, our vacant positions are full, um. I will tell you that uh. Um, when Officer Rosen transferred to the SRO position, that opened up our narcotics detective position. Um, so I, we went through an assessment center um, with a lateral, and two lateral entries. Um, both of them come with experience, uh, one has already been assigned to the vet team. Uh, in the, in the past for another agency, uh, I'm not releasing his name, we've done a conditional offer, we're waiting for him to notify his current employer. That he will be joining our team, uh, but he will be a great asset in. I will let you know as soon as we're able to do that candidate goes. So at that point, we will be. Police staff, hopefully for a while.
Hopefully Portland Police Department won't totally take over the um. Training facility to get your recruits trained before you.
So. There's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff that needs to go before the legislature. We, we had a meeting with the director of DPSST with the Joint Chiefs and Sheriffs from Eastern Oregon. Talking about trying to get our candidates through training and stuff. There probably needs to be a uh, training facility in Eastern Oregon. Um, so that we can get more people certified and through in a timely fashion. Because uh, one, one of my officers is gonna be six months. Sitting at a computer reading policy until he can go to the academy. Does us no good. We need to get them through the academy and train, so um, the problem that we, we have with that is. The state legislature about fifteen years ago. Um, it used to be uh, this, the academy would get so much money out of every citation that was issued. And that would go to the training academy so that they can continue to train police officers. Well, the legislators took that money to put in some other fund and hasn't been properly funding the academy. Um, so there, we, we really need to put some pressure on our legislatures to fully fund the police academy. So that we can get good, qualified, well-trained officers back on the street. It's, it's imperative that we do this, so um, there's, it's definitely gonna be some discussions. I, I, I go to Salem. The end of this month, we're uh, uh, joint chief sheriff's conference and we're gonna be meeting with. Uh, the director of the academy at that level and then uh, hopefully legislators trying to convince them they need to step up and take care of our. Police officers.
So how many officers is that altogether now?
That's with everybody.
Okay.
That goes from Butch all the way up, right?
From me all the way down. I guess it's however you look at it.
You were the top, you were the king, okay?
I'm not the king, okay?
You are at the top, you are at the helm, and that then it goes all the way down to Butch. That include, thirteen includes Butch?
No, which is a civilian employee.
So it's thirteen not including Butch.
Thirteen not including Butch, which is a civilian. We have, we have thirteen sworn officers.
And Butch is the only one that's not sworn in.
Do you have um? The, I don't know, I don't know what the official title is, but the, where there are civilians, but they volunteer. And assist.
We have reserves, yes, we have.
How many do you have?
We have two, we have two that are potentially interested. Uh, I won't, we won't do more than five. Um, five is a little bit much to manage, so, but we do use volunteer officers. The, the, there's no state certification for a reserve officer. So they don't. They don't get any training from the state, so we actually, our agencies get together, we put on certified training. Uh, we actually do a reserve academy and get these officers the training they need to be able to do what we do.
And the other thing, and we were just. Talking, Chief and I about this, is, you know, Brendan, you're talking about this local, you know, the sense of community and what Chief is doing by. Like doing that, like bringing in people that will stay local, they're here from here, which is, I think. Like the exact, you know, solution of how you do that, how you keep long-term people here, you go under. So he's done really well with that.
Well, it's a little, little bit like, little bit like the issues span really tall, so you have. Employees that are involved in the community, ingrained in the community, uh, ingrained in our schools, ingrained with our students. We make a difference and as a team. We're making Boardman a better place to live. And uh, uh, you, you guys could look at the, the gang issues that we had fifteen years ago compared to where we are today. Um, it's involvement by everybody at the table, working together to make sure that uh, our, our students. So have a, a, a pathway forward to succeed. Uh, it takes everybody in your community to do that, so, absolutely.
Can we answer any questions?
I, I've been seeing the same motorhome, parked around town, they stay like forty eight hours in one spot, and they go to forty eight hours. And I know that we just passed a. Maybe those moments, I was just there the reason in regards to homeless camping.
Is it a white one that's parked in front of?
Yeah, it was by the car wash.
That's the one I saw today.
So uh, that is obviously a code issue, and they'll bring it up with the code officer, but.
Um, well, they're smart, they know that they at least have as much time.
They can't stay more than seventy two hours in one spot, and so that does pose an issue.
I mean, they're not causing any problems, I don't, I don't wanna bring that up, they're not. Like harassing anybody, but it's just.
Do we know if they work in town? Do we know if they have kids that go to school?
And I don't know.
Do we know, uh?
I know they have a dog.
Cause I, I think that would be kind of important because uh. I'm not saying that I condone it, but at the same time. If they're trying to uh.
So if, if that's the case, there's a hardship process that could be done through the planning for that type of event, so.
Uh, so if the code officer can find that information out, and if there are things that we need to share to let other agencies know. Cause I know I had a student last year whose trailer was stuck at the uh. The old tire store. They have fifth wheel there, and she went to school, and they're not, well, they moved on, they, uh, because they were homeless. And uh, we had agencies that were dealing with them as well, so.
Like I said, they, they're not causing any problems, I just wanted to make sure you were aware.
Thank you. Anything else for Chief?
So this brings up something that I noticed, um, there's the same vehicle parked under a shade tree in the Sage Center parking lot. Day after day after day after day, the same woman sitting at the steering wheel, just sitting there. Morning, afternoon, evening.
All day long.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not peeping at her from my office window, but when I come in in the mornings, I have to run to the store or something for milk, and I come back. The car is there, there's somebody sitting there. I've gone out in the evening, she's sitting there, the windows are all up, the car isn't running, like I think she's probably hot, it's a hundred and two degrees some days, so. But it's just odd. I think it's odd to sit in your car. Under a shade tree. I've heard of the Pokemon thing.
There's two rookie stops there, I'm not saying I know why. I'm just saying that's a possibility.
I usually will just stay in your car for that, usually you have to get out, walk around, at least that's what I see other people do.
There's, there's several things that could be played, um. Uh, we have to park in our parking lot and use the uh, wifi, and, and library does the same thing, Sage Center I'm sure does the same thing. When, when they're on private property, we have no jurisdiction there, unless the property owner says they would like them removed. So uh, we have not gotten that call.
There's always that welfare check, so if you see something that.
I would assure you, they've been.
Oh, I'm sure you have, uh, but, but those are the things that, so if you see something, it's like, that doesn't look right, or man, that's been there, and I've seen that for. You can always, uh, a welfare check, and somebody will, could always find out, because we have a lot of. Lot of people, and I went to the mayor's conference. And the whole conference. Other than the military section on what the National Guard can do for you was all homelessness. That was three days of homeless stuff. And that's how big it is in other cities and. City of Boardman has homeless, but it's nothing near what these other cities have to do. And they're trying to deal with these small cities who have hundreds of the. Uh, homeless people are trying to do it without the budget that we have. As a, as a community. When I shared our city budget, our, our budget, that amount that we have, operating budget. And we're for forty five hundred, and I use the number forty five hundred to fifty five hundred, they could not believe our budget. And then when I talked about the enterprise zone, they couldn't even believe about how much money is coming from the enterprise zone to increase our county and our school. And our port. And uh, they were just in awe, it was like. We kinda really don't have, uh, like, purpose in a shortfall in money right now.
So the code officer advises that that vehicle has been brought down. I'm assuming he's talking about the motorhome? You didn't say? Jose, were you referring to the motorhome?
Yes. The motorhome.
If you're talking, I can't hear you.
He's muted.
Yeah, the motorhome.
Okay. Yeah, like, so they're not causing any problems, I was just concerned, cause they've been there for a few days. And I have not seen any children, just about.
All right, any other questions? Building Department.
Yeah, nothing or anything.
Any questions on the building department report?
Oh, I did, uh.
Psych, is that what that was?
Uh, yeah, there was something brought up, um, oh, it is. Cause there was a request to do permits. And is this the updated? Okay, I can't remember who asked for that.
For Moro County and Boardman.
I did, well, so for all this time, it would say Moro County, but that also includes the urban growth boundary to Boardman, or the nine seven eight one eight. And what I wanted to know is in the, in the county, how many of those are happening in our. Maybe not in the city's purview, but in our urban growth boundary, or that are dramatically impacting our services. Because the fire service, the ambulance service, and all the services that we offer, grocery stores. Are all impacted by the growth that happens in our zip code.
So to answer your question for August, it looks like that, that number would be twenty four?
Yes, yeah, Glenn's been doing it for a few months for me now, which I'm grateful for, because I think that there's a story there. Because that's separate from just Boardman, isn't it? So if you looked at just nine, seven, eight, one, eight, you had fifty four permits sold. This month. Which far and away exceeds the entire rest of the county. And Gillen County.
And it has for a long time. No, I believe that is true as well, but I think that we, we didn't get to see it until we were putting it in this. Cause I can tell you when I was at county, the activity was predominantly, not exclusively, but predominantly in the nine, seven, eight, one, eight zip code. When I was at the county, so that trend has been going on for. Twenty years. Yeah, yeah, up and down, but yeah.
Mayor Kiefer, before you move on to the next item on the agenda, I just have, I wanna go back to the resignation and the um, appointment of a new counselor. Um, this is for more than half of his term. And my question is, and Karen, maybe you know, does the charter address? Does, does something have to go to election at the midterm point? So is the appointment just for the next? Or is it for the entirety of his term?
I didn't see it in the charter. I didn't see it in the charter.
So it's for the remainder of his term, I mean, even if this would have happened three months into his term, it would have been for the remainder of his. Uh some jurisdictions, it's 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 until the next general election, and so I was just curious, thank you.
And when we do our uh. We do our charter and we want to try to, those are some things that we can always talk about.
Absolutely.
From nineteen eighty-five.
Yeah, thank you for the clarity, I just, I have a twenty question and she she wasn't sure either, so, thank you.
You bet. Alright, so we'll jump down to the city manager report.
Well, before we go on, just with the public works, was there any questions on that, I know um. As part of the discussion we that I have shared with you, that there will be a monthly newsletter. Um that will address, for example, we would highlight something within the police department one month. We can highlight something in the building department or public works. Um one thing that I really want to share and it's been brought up a couple of times is to get a little in-depth of what public works. Workers do and what the department does, so that will probably be the very first one, but is there anything about? That public works?
I, so, not to, not to just compare apples and apples, but I really love how there's a. An annual spreadsheet here from the building department and you can see over time an accrual of permits. And one thing that I kind of have been trying to watch is how many meters we read, because that shows how many. Individual homes we have, with the exception of maybe a couple of private parks.
Yeah.
And if we had something that had each month, we could see. Some of those details, because I know they install new meters. But.
So uh we're in the process of replacing every meter in the city of Boardman with radio read meters. So then reading the meters should hopefully be every single.
Yeah, no, I just tried to count number of individual homes. You know, just thinking. Is maybe it's silly.
We have that number, we can exactly how many services.
I used to add that uh when I was doing this work for Kevin. So um I can talk to Ross, I will ask you that. I'll I'll talk to Ross about adding that.
I just was thinking if it was. Like similar to the one that Glenn does, then we'd be able to see over time. I don't know, that one little detail, maybe it's too silly.
But just to see the number of homes would be the.
Well, and I get that some meters serve multiple homes, such as Frontier Trail Park, for example. But I also recognize that if we're building, we had how many new homes go in? In the last little bit, seven, eight, nine, ten. Thirteen in the last three months, new homes. So I'm assuming that there will be some number of new meters, maybe that's with the thirteen radio meters sold out.
That is the installation of the new meters, that's how many they.
Right, thirteen new ones, so maybe they went to new homes, I don't know, but um. Anyway, it just sort of helps me think about how the city is growing.
Do you want a list of a a list of how many new meters are put in a month?
Well, that's already on here and it has how many meters were read, I was just thinking if there was a. A June one and a July one, and she won't say here today, broke down by night. Is that?
So just like what you were putting on, what you were doing before, just like you were doing before.
But I think the growth that it's showing is being more like this electronic, it was amazing, I went and did a couple. Uh with Luis last week, I don't know, whatever, last week or the week before. And it it really is, if that concept is gonna be, makes no more going out, click the button. To see, I mean, it's just.
The U E C did it, they were really happy too.
Well, the time saver, I mean.
Well, I remember when the meter was replaced in mine, which was old school, where they had to lift up the thing. And that's what we had some issues with, yeah, but that, it's kind of interesting how. Technology's improved, so since I, well, I've lived in my house for twenty-five years. Twenty-four years, twenty-four years. And we've had, this will be, so when these, if these new meters end up going through citywide, that will be two new meter, two updates on the meter for my water system. Which is kind of, is kind of cool, I think.
And and even the system that we have now with um, you can go and see all the. Like all the meters, all the, like all the manholes, you can see the fire, I mean, it's just amazing.
Right, I don't think they have to open it.
Yeah, no, and the located, yes.
Any questions, other questions about the uh public works department, any comments there, Miss Graham? On that, on the.
What's an S O C? It says S O C sampling for Organ home authority.
It's assuming on water, it's a, it's a tax water pet. If you turn in solids in the water. And you give the exact term, but it's solid, so.
Needs S O C? Don't you worry.
That's what I asked, but I I if you tell me solids and water, I'm a little scared.
I don't know what it is.
Oh, wastewater, okay.
Well, I'm assuming that's what he's referring to. Yeah, we we have more than one D E Q permit, we have a local water permit, no wastewater permit, and each one of those. Uh have to be sampled at different times, at places uh several times uh uh a month to once every five years.
Soil organic carbon. Is what S O C stands for. Thanks, Google.
Thank you.
Alright, city manager report.
Okay, uh first of all, is this format okay, do you want more detail, do you want to write more?
Um yeah, uh this is nice format, other than our previous city manager wrote in the ninth paragraph one.
That's what I'm asking, do you want more detail, is it? Cause I I certainly, I certainly can add more detail, it was more of a more discussion points. And I can go through this, everything, you want to go through every step, is there questions that you have that pertain, I mean, you can tell me, I'll.
Anything you're excited about, things that um, I mean, we all can read.
I like the project update. So just the list of what's happening and where we are on that, what their.
Um, let me just, so on number two, um that really will be my next. Concept is I'll I'll share some concepts out to the council, I'm gonna do the same thing with our staff, just to get some wording. Um then I would, I really would like to make an official adoption of some kind of a a council vision goal or something, um. Just lots of different formats we can do, but I'll.
Does she shares the word? Does everybody understand what number seven is?
Well, it's part of what we just did. Oh, you're talking about.
You're for number seven on the last one, guys understand what seven is?
Well, I know that there's a grant called Safe, Safe School, Safe School Roots.
Would you mind sharing, I I think it's exciting, and if they don't know, I think that'd be.
Cause we have talked about this, right?
Well, you and I have.
Well, I thought he and I had.
I don't know who he has talked to, I know he talks about the sidewalk in front of San Boardman, yeah.
So um. First of all, having been a part of the San Board and Windy River concept and the kids. For for a couple of years, I I knew the pain that it was, um I really did appreciate the excitement that I got from everyone, like hey, yes, this is. Long-term waiting, um so it was brought to my attention about the project, um so I just had a conversation with Superintendent Comby. Um I've talked to the B C D A about some concepts, whatever, and then we just moved forward. With an with an option like I shared to have Mike Lee's just do a survey, what would it be? So we are in that process right now of doing the survey and cost analysis, there have been entities that have reached out. That should fully fund it, uh what the city did pay for was Mike Lee's survey. Um time and and the drawings, but everything else should be fully funded um outside of. Districts or it's just a different entity, um the hope is. Truly to have it done like this season, I I don't know how much asphalt it would take, I know asphalt's done in November.
So when you're talking about fully funded, what what is, what are we funding?
Funding the sidewalk, moving the parking lot over, retaining wall, all that.
There in front of San Boardman, mostly.
Yeah.
I I've not heard of this. So you might talk to everybody but me. So what is it you're doing?
Sorry.
Wow, okay. We talked so much, kind of like, okay, so again, it was brought up that this concept of move kids to school, the the traffic issue, the parking. Um so we just investigated it, looked at options, talked to Mike Lee's, we went and surveyed it, he's like, oh yeah. I think we can move this parking lot up, I think we can have a the sidewalk that goes from. The corner of Sam Boardman, have it go down all the way down Wilson and meet up on um right in front of the Windy River where that sidewalk is.
Tepco.
So that would be the concept, so that that parking where they do in that div, we would get rid of that. So so you're going to why?
That's right.
Build some kind of retaining wall close to the actual street, correct?
And that sidewalk goes to Tepco.
We haven't talked enough, clearly not.
But yeah, that was a thought, and then again.
Welcome to my life. Oh, I'm just teasing.
Anyway, um and again, fully funded outside from an entity.
And so that would make like maybe three lanes. Of drop off, parking, whatever the school problem is.
No, it it doubles the parking, it like you can now have a like a walking path, might have an understanding. But it increases the parking, the the drop off is still gonna be right in front. Um the bus loop is still the bus loop, that doesn't change.
You're just gonna increase parking.
It really does increase parking and.
It stops both parking and on the gravel on back.
Correct, oh yeah, that's.
Backing up in the traffic.
And you have. So I love Windy River students so very much, sometimes they get a little um more. Energetic as they're walking in front of the younger kids and there have in times been conflicts. So this would alleviate that, you would have a windy river. Path that they they are not interacting with that, it really is very clustered when you have all of Windy River coming in, interacting with all the younger kids, that would stop that.
What I was really excited about was getting a sidewalk that would take those kids where they didn't have to walk up to San Boardman, they could walk straight across. And have a safe place, it's not in the road, it's not in the parking area, and it's away from San Boardman, so those kids could just keep going right up there.
And they don't have to cross the street.
Correct.
To get to a sidewalk.
Yeah, there we go.
And and again, like Chief has mentioned this a couple of times, just the. Karen has talked to to me at length about this as well, like all this happens because we're just like, hey. Here's an idea, what can we do, and then you talk to certain people and like, hey, I can help you too, and it really is, that is what makes. Uh this area is so unique um to make that, because it really is, it's it's a big deal. It for a lot of families.
And so when you talk about what Brenda was talking about, sense of community, those are really how things.
Yeah.
Begin to happen.
It is.
You know.
Correct.
Any other comments about uh his report?
The Bella Vista one.
Yes.
So what do the people of Bella Vista say about the human may have a?
Well, the board at Bella Vista is actually really excited. So when this project uh started, I actually reached out to the city, we had already reached out previously. But couldn't really be figure out an area to make pathway. So we ran into issues at Bella Vista when. We'd have children in the, like the fall winter where it starts to get dark early. Walking home from schools and owners getting hit by vehicles, so the board said, what can we do? We need a pathway, we had new construction, homes being built. Adjacent to the east of Bella Vista and tenant said, hey, there's a good area right here. Unfortunately, the developer wasn't okay with splitting that parcel because they already had the county. Uh have the the parcel already designed and and ready to go for tax purposes. But at the southeast area of Bella Vista. There's new development that's happening, we have this developer. Ready and willing to build a pathway there, so this is something that has been brought up during all member meetings. And it's, I believe this is the second year it's been brought up and people seem to be very. Excited for it, but I can't say on every single person's opinion. In whichever area that residents live at Bella Vista, it's gonna be more convenient. Because we have people that are gonna be willing to walk their children to school, are not gonna be. Walking directly on Paul Smith, Paul Smith, I consider a more dangerous route for walking. In any circumstance, we have forty mile per hour and be right between Wilson and is it Kunzi? Kunzi, right in between, we have no clear visibility. As we don't have any sidewalks, so. I think this is something that not just the board, but the community will be excited. For um so I'm currently not employed by Bella Vista anymore. But I am a member and in communication with the board. And this is something that the board has expressed excitement towards, just being able to tell the kids like, hey, you have a safe way to walk. To school and walk back and knowing that the parents as well can walk their children, it's a good alternative, there's gonna be days where. It's not gonna be used as much like in the winter, but comes springtime and even, you know, some um summer school. It's convenient, and I know a lot of tenants that walk, if there's one thing in this community of Boardman. That the very first time I came here, I was like, okay, wow, there's a lot of people walking. Everywhere, and I think if you compare Hermiston, Umatilla, Irigan, Echo, Stanfield. And Boardman, the community that walks the most is Boardman, every single day you have to see at least five people walking around in town. In other communities, everybody has a vehicle, you have to get, you know, you have to have that transportation. But you're in Boardman, you see a lot of people walking, I'm I'm one of those people that. I'm like, okay, I'm gonna walk along, I'm gonna get to my community or, and and it might also be. The fact that we feel safe in this community, we feel like we can walk around, so I think having that option for the children and the. The families and that, not just them, even the elderly people that. Need to go on walks, you know, for their health and and the kids that just want to, you know, keep in shape and have that access, you know, I think it'll benefit. And and this will just benefit Bella Vista, this will benefit all the neighboring people as well for that access.
And they had, so there's a designated area already, they're waiting for phase five, I think, in. River Ridge. Even though he said that the bill developer would say they would do the sidewalk right now.
So there's a spot in Bella Vista for it, or?
Correct.
Okay. And when is phase five?
Next.
So we're talking about phase five, so five over her age, so their original approval has actually been a long enough ago, it's most likely expired. Also, they've approached us and said they're ready to start phase five, so we're gonna have to take them back to the process of approving phase five, five through eight. So we'll be doing that over the next couple of months, excellent.
That was one of our workshop uh discussions. Since I've been on the council.
This will be great.
It's exciting.
I was actually speaking to the board about possibly having an event. You know, like a walking event, you know, there's different communities that have, you know, like the Biggest Loser, you know, where, you know, there's. You know, uh money pot and whoever wins the most, you know, gets that, and we we don't wanna highlight weight loss. Because we have children, but um one thing that I suggested to the board is, how about who walks the most miles in a month? Like you you have a smartwatch or you have a phone, show us, you know, your your daily mileage, I mean, well. Not really mileage, but your, you know, your total feet that you walked and and let's see. What we can come together as a community to kind of push and encourage everybody to walk. I mean, hopefully it's not in December and January when the snow is falling pretty heavily, but maybe like in the springtime, have an event. And an annual event, and at Bella Vista, last year we had the first um Christmas light competition. And it seems like everybody just went all in, so we're hoping that that as a community, the next few. So we're hoping that that as a community, the next few years they'll be able to just kind of highlight certain events and just tie in with the city so that it not only brings the community together and closer, but also maybe like, look, you know, our officials care about our community and our kids.
One thing that's really exciting, and I I think people kind of forget about it is that we have developers that are coming in who are willing to work with the communities around to make the change. Cause that developer doesn't have to do that, you just say, you know, I'm not gonna sacrifice the land, I'm gonna I'm gonna pay the money to do whatever. And we have developers based because of our community, the Port of Morrow and the people that are coming into the Boardman area who are building know how important it is to be a good partner to their community. And that's one thing that is really happening, especially with our businesses that are coming and as well as Amazon. Uh, there's a lot of people who don't like Amazon, but they are a good partner. They are a very good partner and we gotta keep that partnership with them so that this county, the entire county, could be one of the richest, if not the richest county in the state of Oregon per capita. Because we have good partnerships. Now stop right there.
Can we talk about number ten?
Yes.
On this page.
Page one. The only ten. It's the meetings giving out locations that are dated by the council.
Yeah.
So with this um, along the lines of trying to find ways to go out to the community.
So this was, yep, so this was just brought up to me about having council meetings in different locations and that is within our charters right there. So. I was just bringing that information back.
And is somebody wanna explain to me what that, what we want to not meet here anymore?
I believe there were suggestions of whether it was an outreach or doing something that the meetings would be held in different locations for that, but again, it was, to me, it was.
I mean, we have an outreach right there and I see one, two, three, four, five, six people.
Years ago, we went to a League of Oregon cities, I think it was just Karen and I, maybe there was one other person or two, but in there, they talked about how they did community outreach, one of the ways that they did that was that they worked with their local, other local agencies. And the one that, the one that res, you know, keeps ringing in my head was the Catholic church. And they just talked to whoever the priest is and said, hey, can we have a meeting, one of our regularly scheduled council meetings at the church? You tell all your parishioners, we're gonna be there on this day, if they wanna come and attend a council meeting, and it's it's akin to some training that we took with Anna Brown on um, po- on poverty, understanding poverty, and you take some of the guesswork and the hidden obstacles or hidden rules to programs like city, city government and school districts and those, you take those hidden rules off the table when you break down that barrier and take it, take it on the road. And what those places found, and I can't remember if it was Troutdale or whatever towns it was, was that they had a lot more community involvement when they went back to their home base. People started attending, they were more engaged with city government. And so um, I was talking to Brandon about that idea, so that's why I was asking that what this was meant for.
I I would add that um, we've had some conversations with some developers who are looking at doing a U G P expansion of in Boardman, adjacent to Boardman. And that particular planning process requires a review at both the county and the city level. And would require meetings of an approval through both planning commissions and then the city council as well as the board of commissioners. Those are always more easily handled when you can figure out how to do those meetings jointly. And the county planning commission moves around the the county already, as do the board of commissioners. But what would be beneficial in those situations would be able to relocate the planning commission and the council, not because this isn't a good venue, but because it would be difficult to to have on the dais fourteen planning commissioners or sixteen planning commissioners um, and even seven plus three county, you know, commissioners with city council members. So we could do that in the big room at Port of Morrow or in another location. And it looks like this would allow the city council or the planning commission to meet in a venue other than here, and that's good to know, so I appreciate.
I mean, I like that as far as if it's not the majority of the meetings, I mean, there are times where we're gonna be putting up a traffic light and doing a traffic revision, that might be a time that we reach out and go into a different place. But this council room is here for the council, for the community to come.
Right.
And I've been to enough meetings throughout our communities and it's the topic that gets people out.
Yeah, well, we have had in the past, um, we have had city council meetings at the high school auditorium. I'm, I attended one of them. I was there because that's when they voted on the rec district passing. And the city had to vote on it. And they held it at the high school.
Mm-hmm, so I think there are times, I just hate to see the majority of the times go away from this nice hall that we have in this area. And if we pick and choose and make sure that we're going to a venue and it's a purpose where we're gonna have people to show up. I mean, I'm not in favor of having it at the Catholic church. But I think there are avenues and venues that we could have that would promote that.
Well, and and technology. Getting all this set up and moved around to different locations is not gonna be easy and making sure you have the right internet to provide a uh, a video for a Zoom meeting.
And I and I can understand all of that because I take a look at Morrow County School District, she's trying to do uh, I think they do three venues, I think they do uh, they might only do two now. Uh, one north end and a south end, just because of the technology piece and then the logistics of it. But if that's something we wanna do for, and I think there's certain have certain events that we could, that probably warrant that. I I I would be in favor of those things. Absolutely.
Well, and I think that we, sometimes we could have a public meeting, not a council meeting. But like you say, when we get prepared, that maybe we need to start really thinking about that, the stoplight. I think that's a time, because I know when we had, when we were gonna close the overpass so they could pave it and so it made everybody have to use the other route. We had a public meeting about that. So that people, you know, could come and ask their questions, the business people and the citizens and how they were, how the tourists were ever gonna know to go around, go, but I think it's like Rick said the other day, La Bloma was on uh, at the port and it was, it was so bad, the technology that I finally put my shoes on and went down there because you couldn't hear anything, nor could you see anything. So if if you're gonna move technology along, you're gonna have to step that game up because that was a really important meeting. And.
Hard to hear online.
Oh, you couldn't hear much, no.
Yeah.
And then they, then they in depth, they only had one owl and it was just bad.
So the big public meeting I remember is when the city council listened to the public about whether or not to retain a police force in city of Boardman. Right, this is gonna take us back maybe fifteen years. Well, I don't know how long, but a long time. And before Rick.
Yeah.
And at that meeting, it 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 was good to have a different venue, I don't think.
It's a perfect example of having an alternative venue.
Right, but I I, that's not really the purpose in what I was bringing to Brandon when I asked him about it. What I was bringing to him is how do we, how do we get out there and get more people to cross our threshold? Whichever threshold we decide, the Zoom one, the front door of this building or some other place. And when you take away those hidden rules and you open and you reduce those barriers, you get more people who are willing to take a risk and come to us. But you don't get that if you sit here and say, well, they got this and they got this.
I disagree, I disagree with you.
Well, I think the audience is a pretty big telling point.
When's the last time you went to school board meeting and saw how many people were there? Perfect example.
I did it a lot of times when I was a teacher, but I don't have such skin in the game.
Right, so my point, that's my point, you know, they go from place to place to place and they still get a minimum, so I I think we need to be strategic on how we do it and not just say we're gonna go here. I think there's a strategic point, I'm not saying your point isn't valid, I'm just saying that just reducing the risk is not gonna allow the people of Boardman, want to encourage the people of Boardman just because we go to a high school, we go to another event. I think if we have public meetings and you both said the word public meeting and not a city council meeting to be able to get our points across. Public meetings are where we're trying to share with the public what we want them to know. Yeah, we want them to come, but you know, there's gonna be some hot topics you know, that we probably are gonna need to talk about in a public setting that might not be a city council meeting. If you know what I'm saying, that's what I'm trying to do. Cause then we'll be able to, you know, Columbia, with Columbia's done, that's gonna affect a lot of people on the, on that street. And maybe having a public meeting about what's going on and trying to get people you know, have it at a different place, a different venue, maybe somewhere they're close to. When we do the 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 stoplight and the restructure of that, that ride in, ride out, that is gonna be tremendously a pain in the backside, cause I was just thinking about getting out of the high school and getting off on the freeway. And then I could only go right in or right out, and if I go the wrong way and I go on Front Street and I wanna go south, I can't go that way unless I illegally turn, I gotta take a right, go through a stoplight, oh my gosh. Now that's, and we were just, my wife and I were just talking about that. And those are gonna, I think, are good opportunities that we can really try to do, and maybe we can push, you know, start with that and try to do that, but I I I really think our our city council meetings should be here, that's all I gotta say.
I I I would add to, Brendan, I think I understand what Brendan's trying to convey, it's not so much about the meetings, the meeting is what we tried to do to try and bring people in, new faces and get them involved and rotating around, wh- wherever you decide to do it, if that's what we decide um, can make a difference in getting more people involved because I I I get what you're saying, you're you're coming out from the community standpoint, is what I'm thinking. Is that you wanted to see new people get involved, have more of a sense of community and how do you do it? You you try and have, you know, you think of different ideas to try and get more people involved. And I don't see anything wrong with that.
And it's sometimes it's easy for people to believe what they read on Facebook if they don't have anything tangible to associate.
And and it's different than if you see it in person.
Right, and if we can start to try to find a way to bridge that, we can try to clean up some of that um, mis-messaging. But I'm only one voice, it's just an idea.
It's a discussion.
It is a discussion.
Yeah. The the uh, the straight light project, when we update the interchange area management plan, that that will require an adoption of a document that will go initially from the planning commission and come in front of the city council. And I think we will have discussions internally about what kind of crowd we think that might, because it'll be a significant number of people that will get notified. And how many of those people are businesses, a good share of them, and will there be will there be significant attendance and is this venue large enough? I mean, and and I was just counting chairs, there's a good number of chairs here. But is it still enough? And so I think that's part of what goes into the discussion, at least it always did when I was at the county from the planning commission. And I remember when I started, we would hold the um, the planning commission at the north end in the justice um, of the pieces courtroom in the Irigan building, so some of you know how small that room was. There was barely enough room for the planning commission, let alone any audience. So um, is the venue big enough, and do we have the right kind of, do we need security, do we have the right security? I think those are all the questions for me, from a planning perspective, when I look at what the venue is for a public hearing. And those are the ones that I would think about, you know, the big room at the Port of Morrow might be sized better for something where you are gonna anticipate a larger crowd. And sometimes it's not so much that this wouldn't be a big enough venue, but is there enough space to put between the people in the venue too? So. Yeah.
Any other questions about Mr. Hammond's report?
Yeah, just a couple more things with the youth advisor, uh, when I talked to Mr. Christie, he was hoping for a little more direction. With the council, again, that was brought up to me, of having some youth advisors. Anyone wants to address?
It should be a student council member.
Okay, so again, that's the thought and he was wondering if there would be a timeframe, um, I know when I was uh, some school boards have it where they have the advisors and then there's a set time like, hey, after they do a recess and then the student advisors would leave, but he was wondering what kind of parameters are you looking at?
I don't know, I think it might be something that we might wanna think about.
Okay, perfect. Are you looking at the youth uh, council thing for?
Like we did.
Kind of like Chuck uh, Chuck Phillips had, that was what I was thinking. Trying to try to get the high school kids maybe have.
Sorry we threw that stuff away.
Just trying to think of um, did he really throw it away?
I think so, I said.
Only I could, I did.
No, but I I I was just thinking, you know, uh, try, I was, with having all those kids just come in the spring. It's like, you know, maybe there could be an opportunity for those kids to create a youth advisor like they do in Hermiston. It doesn't have to be the same thing with their city council, but trying to, you know, create those kids who may not be on city council or I mean, student council, but might wanna have an interest in government. And I was just thinking, you know, talking to Mr. Christie and he's actually trying to think of other ways that um, we could guide him and deliver, and I think this was the first time that many people have seen it. And I have no idea how it should be going, but I I was just thinking if that would be something that we would like to do, that's something we could always invite some it could be a rotate, cause uh, Mayor Drosman says that they kinda have a rotation of who can come and who can't come and they they might have something to share, they might not have something to share, but I like the idea of you know, being able to come, have a participation, if they'd like to go, they're then excused, they don't have to stay for the whole thing unless they do. Yes.
I I would like to add to that, if if there's an opportunity to get youth involved, um, I would say we could certainly figure out how to do a, you know, obviously non-voting member, but an eighth chair of the planning commission if they had an interest in that kind of involvement. And then as we move into all of this planning work that we're gonna be doing, we will need a a a um, public advisory committee, it would be great to have a representative um, from the the high school student party that would participate in that, and that would be a commitment that would be a that would be a meeting a month potentially for a period of time. I mean, and could they get school credit for it?
They get the, I think that would be something that they'd have to talk to Mr. Christie, but I know it would cover their graduation requirement.
Enter your service hours.
And things like that. What?
I'm, I was yelling so hard, I'm, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Are we boring yet? I I don't mean that in a mean way, but.
I like the idea of a high school student being involved with the planning commission because that's something that they should know, and they know that the, there's a a lot more to it than just, we just talk about it and let it just happen, it's like they're gonna know, the all the ins and outs of something like, I think that's in my opinion, even greater than being involved with a city council meeting.
So Mayor Keever, do you wanna, do you want you and I to visit a little more and kind of?
Yeah, and and I would, I would highly suggest and and Karen would be a good resource because she was there during that time. And were you on the council when we had with Chuck Phillips?
Yes, Chuck used to come to the school, now obviously he was retired.
He did a lot of.
Yes, he would come to the school and talk to kids and just ask them. He he talked to everybody, but he was retiring, so he had the ability to come and go as.
But I was just thinking if anybody had any ideas that they wanna share with uh, Mr. Hammond and uh, on anything that you would like to do.
And again, it was just brought up, so bring up discussion, options, so yeah, I can, I can go with that.
And we can talk to Mr. Christie. Talk to him more.
Um, the next thing was uh, with this whole urban renewal ad- adoption that we just did, I was talking to Elaine Howard and and she brought up an interesting idea of doing a possible training. Again, when I I don't know who I was talking to, Jackie, I was talking to Jackie, so right now in our adoption. Jackie, I was talking to Jackie, so right now in our adoption, we're four times a month, a year. That we are required to meet and discuss the urban renewal, like the west central and now the north. And what she would do is just like a one to two hour. Course on what this entails, um, just the possible options, so she gave me a date of October twenty fifth. Again, up to you, all, if you think that would be beneficial.
I cannot do October twenty.
It seems like we kinda did a.
It's a hunting season.
And I was going in because then it works five thirty this morning.
I mean, it doesn't have to be October twenty fifth, it's just she's in the area. But is, first of all, is this something that you're interested in?
I don't know, we all need to be there, but I think that it's one of those that, I'm so sorry, Martha, but. I think this is something that. There's, it's more of a staff thing that they need to understand, because now we've asked. The city council, we're done with this. So now it's the staff that needs to know, okay, don't forget that you have to do these meetings. And that you have to file these reports and stuff.
That the council, that this consists of the board that is supposed to meet four times a.
Right, well, that's okay.
Yeah.
But.
Some of us have had four or five trainings on urban renewal. And what Elaine went over at the last meeting was a great recap.
Cool.
Never had that, that might just feel like I still have a lot of questions.
I think she didn't, so maybe ask if she could send us all that same information that she gave us in that.
Yeah.
Cause it was, it was detailed, and so it'd be nice to have that to look back as a reference. So when somebody does ask, cause I've had people ask me on a game, what's this mean, and I just gave them the rough, what I was told. And so that they kinda had an understanding, you know, about it.
Brandon, it might be best to put that information, cause it's, it's public information, she didn't share anything that's rocket science. That we just put it on the urban renewal page on the Kansas City's website.
Yeah, and, and I was told that there has been requests to have like a real brief summary of an urban renewal for the community, and I'm. We're working on that, but just again, a very. Brief summary, but is there anyone that, again, everyone learns differently, I am not a sit and get, I do like having a, like a visual conversation. But is anyone interested in having Elaine or just send out the information?
I'd rather get the information.
I would rather.
Oh, I can do that. So we'll just send out any information and post it on there, where she's already done. Okay, uh. One more thing is, I would like to request, um, the option of. What am I, what am I asking, oh, I even wrote it down, so I don't mess it up, uh, if I can request an enterprise zone boundary change. Uh, for proposed development in downtown areas which would qualify for exemption status for potential developers.
Does that have to go to the planning commission first?
No, it has to go to you to give me per- permission to then go to the enterprise zone.
So the enterprise zone is not a planning motion, okay, so there's no, there's no real connection. The only connection is that if some, if a business is in the enterprise zone. Then they get those, those tax abatement options, but there's no impact of zoning, there's no impact development, what we're seeing is interest for hotels. And currently there are some parcels where we know hotels are gonna be built that were included in the boundary previously. And there are new sites that aren't included in the boundary. So for parity, we're looking to see if we can get all of those potential development parcels within the boundary. But then the next question that came up is the shift from size two to size three.
We're good.
We're good on that, okay, so we know we're good on that, the question was, did they authorize hotels, but if they authorized hotels, or if they can authorize hotels, then we're good on that. We just wanna make sure that there's parity for developers who are coming in that are doing hotels.
Yeah, and I just need permission from the council.
So just permission to move the boundary or?
Permission to request the boundary to change, moving the enterprise.
It, it's not, what, what he's talking about is he's not moving anything, really, he, on, on the map of the enterprise zone. Oh, on this side, we drew like a couple, three lots where we felt pretty sure. Hotels had been planned. We drew nothing on the north side, so now we would like to probably have him go ask. About putting one or two, you know, like on northeast front and maybe on Olson. And that's just a thing where you have to ask the, the enterprise zone board if they're willing. Because it's, it's, it's a, it's a nothing deal. It just, that, because they get a, a hotel gets a three-year. Exemption, they don't have to have the number of employees or the amount, they just get a three-year standard exemption.
And that's through the credit board, that's through the enterprise zone.
And so it makes it really nice for them not to have to pay those taxes. And get started, and over on the north side, there's no place to give anybody, and it would be a great development tool.
So do you need a motion or do you just need a consensus?
I would, yeah, that's what I would think, I would just think that he should.
I don't have a problem with that. Cause I think it's super beneficial for businesses to come in.
If it's a good incentive, it's gonna help long term, I think it's a good idea.
It's an economic development tool in our toolbox, and it's an important one.
And it's a yes for main city manager.
And it's part of the reason we're working so hard to get the urban. North side urban renewal then, I mean, bottom line.
I'm, I'm okay with it, that's all we have to give you, looks like there's a majority.
We know there's at least two parcels that we need to, to add to the current boundary, so.
Cool, and then, uh, again, the last thing, I, I've been talking about this promoting on the website, under community. There's that adding the notification link. I just, again, publicly wanna encourage people to go on the website and subscribe so they can get notifications, I'm very willing. To post school events, again, it's just that one hub that you can do. We're looking at adding text messaging, it, it isn't available right now, but the SMS feature will be added. Then, I think just would be beneficial, so please make sure, sign up.
I was thinking about that, and maybe on our garbage vouchers, this next time, we will either tell them. Put something on it that says, to get your garbage voucher, you have to sign up. Well, so that way they, you can say something to them, you know.
Are you, are you wanting me to put that on, on next month's water bill?
No, I mean, you're, you remember when we pass out those, you can go out and do your garbage for free, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, so go and put, put something on there, on that.
Yeah, or type, make sure and tell them, and then show them how to get to the website.
Oh, Mr. Hammond, I think you have the longest, uh, city manager report that I've ever been a part of.
You know, put me on record that it was not me talking.
He just never, never, never.
Yeah, it's good, it's all discussion.
Yeah, totally smokes. All right. Counselors, council reports, any council comments?
I would, I think. I, I did attend that, looked long on the meeting, and, uh, it was an all day, I mean, it went from nine to five thirty at night. And, um, I think we. I know that J R Cook is willing to come and speak to the council about our water issues in this area, and. I think when we get ready to prove up on our new well, I'm pretty sure we wanna keep in contact with them, but, um. It was, it was really an interesting meeting, because there was, there was some people there that, um. You know, you had some people there that was for the testing of the wells part of it, but you had this one man. Get up and he was a state retired state man, and he said, you know, really, we need, we're, we need to go from the bottom. And let's, we need to talk about how much fertilizer you put on your lawn. Because if you put that much on a field, you would be putting this much on a field, you know, I mean. Our, and so he gave a really nice presentation, so it, it was worth, it was worth the time to. So I, I wanna keep, uh, kinda going and seeing, um, because, and the farmers, uh, they had, uh. Brad Reader and, um. Maybe, maybe Harris was the other one that came, and they, one of them talked about like three mile about. How they use the methane and, and they're putting that hole in the whole close circle. Yeah, and the other one spoke about how, how much different water. You know, years ago, when you, you used to see blood irrigation, then we went to circles and, you know, the circles were. The drip things were way high and now they're real low, and so it, there's, there's a lot of information that needs to be. We're back to this, out to the public, so people understand. That it's not all negative, that, you know, so, anyway.
So on, on top of that, uh, we went, Brandon and I went to the water meeting at the high school week. Ago, ish, and there were lots of resources there. I, I wanna back up to May third, fourth, when the governor came to visit. And met with many of the residents who had water issues. And at that meeting, she promised to come back. And bring information and resources and start to dig into their concerns. And so she and her aides, I think her aide's name is Anka, uh, I think so anyway. Um, they put together the Oregon Health Authority. I don't wanna say anything unkind, but the Oregon Health Authority really came and brought all the big guns to that meeting. They had engineers, they had, um, the. I forget how you say they're, what they're called, they're, uh, they're internal medicine people, they know about.
Holistics.
They know about. Uh, chemical problems that can happen in your body, I forget what they call them. Anyway, it's matter, they brought people from all over who do soil work, who do water drilling. Who know all about what happens to groundwater when you add things to the top and what happens, and. They had, they had fun displays, inter- interactive things, they had, uh. I don't, it, the fancy word would be a diorama of soil and next, next to a riverbed, and if you. And then they would add a pollutant, it was so fascinating, and. I wanted to invite them all to come and talk to us, and some of them didn't have cards, so all they could say was, well, I'm from such and such. And I have such an old brain, I can't remember all of it. So one of the things that I really learned in that example was that this is a bigger issue than just thinking. You live too close to somebody else's septic tank, or yours, your well doesn't have a sleeve, or you didn't go deep enough, or you're too shallow. It's way bigger than that for wells, and it's way bigger than who's putting fertilizer where. That this is, this is a, this is the kind of problem that takes. A lot of investigation, can't just point your finger and find the, find the person to blame. But they brought all these people together, and it was very, very informative, and if you were willing to stand there and talk to each and every one of these individuals. You could get a lot of information about your current situation. I'm gonna cite an example, Joe Taylor just drilled a well on his property, and he went down. A hundred feet, his is a brand new well, he put in a sleeve, everything should be good, right, his nitrate level was like. I'm gonna make this part up, twenty seven, his daughter, who lives across a half unpaved road. And down the street, a house has a one hundred year old well, no knowledge of it, if it has a sleeve in it. Likely not, and her nitrate level is six, five at the well. Before you do a filter. And it should be the same water, right, but it's just not. And that was really fascinating for me, and then when you watch them pouring the pollutants into their little diorama. And you watch the water change colors, and the, the longest well should probably get filled up, and it does eventually. But there are wells in the middle that never get any of the nitrates, it just doesn't go there. It was very fascinating, very fascinating, lots to learn on that topic.
You said that was the Oregon Health Authority?
The Oregon Health Authority were the hosts, if you will. I believe they were.
I, I believe they were too.
I don't know how many vendors there is.
There was lots and lots of vendors there, they were there to promote childbirth and how to help with that, they were there to promote eating. They were there to do all kinds of things that would, uh, help. Families, basically, um, and but there were tables, several tables set up just for well testing. And they had been published in the East Oregonian the day before for being all over Yumitala County. If you knew of somebody who hadn't had their well tested, you could drop their name and a telephone number at that spot, and they would send a team of people to their house same day. So I knew one person, I sent a message, they sent a team to that house same day.
Day four?
No, it was not day four, but if I had known about day four, I would have said his name, no. Um, anyway, that, it was, it was very well done, so. A plug for the governor.
Any other council comments? All right, so I have two comments, one's about, uh, Ben's, he's gonna be, I think Senator Ben's, Representative Ben's, he's gonna be in Hepburn tomorrow. Of course, it's at four thirty, you know, he wants to meet with, so if anybody wants to go and meet with him, set the four thirty, he wants to be with leaders of our communities. Uh, it's the same town hall that we had with, uh, the two that came over here in Boardman and there, and. Uh, my second comment, um, is. Not directed to. Mr. Monkers, uh, it's, it has to deal with this health district issue. Um, it's not the fact that we don't wanna work together. You know, this is the time where I, I don't, I don't get to comment, I don't get to comment on public comment, but, um. The issue is Emily Roberts, the, the person who's in charge, uh. I've had dealings with her, she's not a nice person. She is dishonest. Uh, and I do, I do believe that she is a liar. And, uh. It's important for people to know that it's wrong that she somehow convinced her board. To sue. That I think that's just wrong, and to take a, and we have a bond issue coming up. And it's very difficult to be supportive of that, when we look at the services. That I've been, since I've been mayor, that Emily Roberts has said that's coming, that hasn't come. Okay, the only service I see is that little bus that's out there, that is what we get. And so in order to be supportive of the bond measure, it's really hard to support that. When Emily Roberts is doing those things, and I, I don't blame the board, I can talk to the board, I can talk to you, Mr. Monkers, I can talk to other board members. But. Talking to Emily Roberts, just is very, very difficult to do, and I don't know how. And it's created a lot of hard feelings, and you probably are finding out those hard feelings, I've gone to, uh. The board meetings in. In here again, and it, I, it was like, I don't wanna, that wasn't, was like. That was kind of a confrontational thing, but you know, it's like, if, if you wanna speak out against her, you have a concern about the health issue. They don't wanna listen to you. They don't wanna listen to you, especially if you are. Uh, EMS or you're with the fire service, if you have any of those things, uh. I will say Boardman is really looking on, working on taking care of themselves, not saying we don't need the health district, but I don't need their bond. Because I can, I would really like my taxes to go down, and if I don't updo the bond, then my taxes will go down. But I, I just, I think it's important that if there's a message that you wanna take back. And this is from the mayor, because it's during my comments, this has nothing to do with any of these other individuals up here, is. Uh, the dealings that I've had with her have not been good. And I, and I've said those feeling, feelings, and those are the feelings that I feel about her, there are opinions, and those opinions have come. Because of the dealings that I've had with her, and, uh, I think that is a lot of the concerns that people are having. So, I, I applaud that you're on the board, trying to. Do an impossible job, I think it's very, very difficult, cause there's a lot of challenges, you know. Uh, but, uh. That's all I have to say as far as, uh, mayor conferences, is if you can attend Hepburn Fairgrounds tomorrow, uh, Ben's will be there. He's looking to talk to people who are able to come, uh, we're all busy, but that's their town hall, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.